Come to order for our community meeting of January ninth, twenty twenty five. At this time, if Cliff is able to unmute his microphone and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Don. Everybody, if you're able, please stand and remove your hat and place your right hand over your heart. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff. Like to welcome everybody here to our meeting. Hope everybody had a good Fourth of July weekend. Uh, I know it was a little warm out there, but it's only gonna get warmer. So glad everybody is here to attend. Uh, tonight, our meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. And Cindy Grimes is our volunteer host for this evening. So if anybody has any questions, if you could direct them to Cindy while the meeting's taking place, then we will continue on. Uh, we have quite a bit to cover tonight, so I'm gonna see if I can't keep it moving right along. Uh, again, the one thing we do request is that because being held, the meeting's being held virtually. If you can keep your microphone on mute until it's your turn to uh speak. Then it'll keep any background noise or chatter from uh impeding the actual progress of the meeting. So at this time, we're gonna move right on to, oh, the other thing is if you wanna record the meeting, you can press the red or the record icon and request uh permission in the general chat or direct message. Our co-host um Cindy Grimes to uh to start that recording. Uh, at this point, we have the uh ag- agency reports and our first agency report is Los Angeles County Sheriff's. Uh, resident deputy Deputy Martinez. Are you here with us tonight? I see you. There you are.
I am, Don.
Great.
Alright, so for the month of June, we had zero part one crimes bringing our total to three. Uh, we had zero property crimes as well, which uh brings our total to eight for the year. And that is a ten percent increase in crime from year over year. Uh, from the year prior to that. Um, and the other thing, it's not so much a concern for you guys uh yet. I haven't had any phone calls, but just gonna re- reiterate some of the stuff I said to Acton. Um, they had some calls of what they thought was ICE agents going door to door. It was our detectives doing follow-up, knocking on people's doors, looking for video footage. Um, we know, we have lots of unmarked vehicles that we use as well. We assist the DA's office all the time. They drive around and you guys see them around the community when they're doing their inspection warrants and all that other stuff. None of those vehicles are marked and they come out with uh outer plate carriers as a police. Usually they'll uh will will assist them as the marked uniformed personnel for those warrants. Same thing with our Narcotics Bureau and Major Crimes Bureau. Uh, other agencies like LAPD, Glendale and all that do often do warrants in our area. Um, in LAPD and stuff like that. So you will see people that just say police and that's it. It's not sheriff, it's not ICE. It's just normal business as usual kinda stuff. Um, so some residents were very worried about that, but we wanted to address it as far as that goes. Does anyone wanna have anything else, right?
Don, you're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Officer Martinez. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for Orlando? I don't see any hands up. So again, I wanna thank you for the report. And we look forward to working with you over the next couple months and meetings. Uh, next up, we have the California Highway Patrol team. I believe Officer Allen is here tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yes, sir. I'm making this meeting.
Perfect. Alright, let's uh, let's go ahead and hear your report.
Alright, apologies for missing the last one. I was in downtown LA. I couldn't pull myself away long enough to uh talk to you guys. Uh, so this month's uh June month stats were a little low, uh just because of the uh unrest or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, downtown LA, so we shifted a lot of resources there. Uh, I was there for at least a two-week period straight. So we'll start with traffic crashes. Actually, uh, the traffic crash numbers themselves look pretty good. Uh, on the unincorporated areas, this one, CR Highway only had one reported, report taken for the month of July, or June, sorry, June. I looked into that one because it happened during commute hours and I was a a little bit curious about it. It was at nine twenty eight hours approximately. Uh, a vehicle passed, or actually ten hour, ten, ten hours. So ten o'clock in the morning, vehicle passed. Uh, was on the wrong side of the road when he collided with another vehicle going northbound. Yeah. Uh, Solida Canyon had four total, one being a property damage, three injury. Nothing on Sand Canyon like usual. Uh, Bouquet had three property damaged, well, two injury crashes. We go to Aguado Dulce Canyon and they are coded as three property damage, one injury and one hit and run. Uh, that's five total. Seems a little high. Uh, I'd have to look into where those crashes actually occurred and maybe just miscategorize. Uh, and on the freeway, it was actually excellent for the month. The southbound side near you guys only had eleven total crashes. Uh, eight were property damage and injury and two hit and runs, all minor injuries this month. And the southbound side had three injury crashes, which were all minor. Uh, just one that was kinda out of the usual, that I thought maybe you guys would ask about. There was a crash. It was reported on CR Highway this month, uh, the seventh, which was reported as a vehicle versus pedestrian. Uh, it was in the same location that that fatal and near fatal occurred. Uh, a month later with a juvenile down by the uh little academy down there just south of the Vasquez. Uh, actually, the owner of the car got out without putting it in park and then ran themselves over. So it wasn't like a pedestrian got hit by a uh motor vehicle crossing or anything. So uh, traffic citations were down the area, like you said. Uh, unincorporated seventeen, uh, CR Highway had fourteen total. Nothing on Solidad, Sand, Bouquet or Aguado Dulce. And the freeway had seventy-eight citations, northbound eighty-seven, southbound. Okay, so we'll move on to arrests in the area. The uh, the unincorporated had one DUI, two suspended licenses. Uh, a report was taken for a stolen construction trailer. Uh, on CR Highway, one DUI, a reckless driver arrest, which is actually my arrest, and a stolen vehicle. Uh, Solidad had a stolen vehicle recovered with the suspect in custody. Nothing on Sand, Bouquet or Aguado Dulce. Then on the freeway. Let's see, we have one warrant arrest, five DUI arrests, two suspended drivers, uh, grand theft. One insurance fraud arrest, a pursuit. And another for allowing a licensed driver to operate their motor vehicle, which was uh borderline reckless, the citation. And in the southbound side, a two DUI arrests, two warrant arrests and a uh like a uh will for force, possibly domestic violence, uh, situation that was resolved on the southbound side. And that's about it for our stats for the month. If I have any questions, I'm here.
Okay. Alright, anybody have any questions for Officer Allen? I don't see any hands up. So at this point, we're gonna thank you for your report. Thank you for being at the meeting tonight. I understand last week, last month was a real mess. So I hope you guys got it all taken care of. Hope they got those cars repaired that had all the.
Uh, well, mine, mine was one of them that took a huge brick through it while we were driving and they repaired it and it looks good as new, so.
I, I, I hope those were ones that were needing repair anyway. So anyway, I, 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 it was unfortunate to see that happen. But one of those things. Um, thank you very much again.
Alright, I'll be here if you have any questions and uh I'll put my email in the chat just in case if anyone wants to contact me now.
Wonderful. We appreciate that. Next up, we have Los Angeles County Department Community Service Representative Maria Graykan. Maria, uh, yeah, she's here with us tonight.
I am here. How is everybody?
Good. How about you?
I am good, thank you. Uh, for the month of June, we had a total of forty-two responses. Uh, two of them were for fires. One was a trash fire um, at Aguado Dulce Canyon and the fourteen. And the other was a vehicle fire northbound fourteen, north of Aguado Dulce Canyon. Um, we had thirty-one medical calls and nine good intent calls. And uh, that is it for the stats. Um, I know I was uh contacted by Ann, I believe, um, with the interest in uh, setting a date for a fall cert class. Uh, so I'm gonna be looking at that and I'll, I'll be getting back to her shortly with the proposed dates for a, a cert class. But we usually do it in October in Aguado Dulce, so probably stick to the same schedule.
Okay.
Uh, and do it around that time, maybe late September.
Wonderful. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Maria tonight? Looks like you're all clear. Thank you for the report. Stay safe and stay cool.
You too.
Next up, we have, um, I think it's, yeah. We have the Acton Aguado Dulce Library Report from Librarian Jim Wall. Jim's with us here tonight. There you are.
Hello, I'm here. How are you doing?
Real good.
Good. Um, so things going on at the library. First, just wanna let everyone know, we've got our summer reading program going on. Um, you can sign up online or here in person at the library. Um, you read books, you log them and you collect prizes. It, it's not something you can really go wrong with. It's um, a great thing to do over the summer, keep everyone involved in the, in the books. Um, some upcoming programs at the library. Um, tomorrow, actually, I do have a blood drive happening here at the library, starting at eleven o'clock in the morning. Come on by, um, if you've got some time. Um, they're always looking for people and they've always got room for walk-ins, so please come on by. Uh, other things, I've got Wednesday, July sixteenth at three thirty. We've got um, a program where kids are gonna be playing with color theory and mixing different colored clay to make clay monsters. Um, sounds like fun, uh, if you ask me. So they've got that going on. Um, another good one, big one we've got going on, Thursday, August seventh. That's when we're having our annual end of the summer ice cream social that the Friends of the Library sponsor. Um, that'll be at three thirty in the afternoon. Come on by, get some ice cream, uh, get some prizes. It'd be lots of fun. Um, those, they're always great. And the Friends are there too to help um, set it all up and they sponsor it. Um, the only other thing I'll let you know about, I know you guys are dark in August, so our next holiday will be oh, September first for Labor Day. Uh, we'll be closed that day. Um, aside from that, unless you guys got questions for me, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions for Jim? Looks like we're clear. Thank you again for your participation and for your report. Now, have a good uh July and August.
You too.
Alright, next up, we have the Department of Public Works Report by Josie.
Hi, everybody. I'm Josie DeTerrorist. LA County Public Works. Um, I don't really have much to report, uh, just a friendly reminder. Um, if you guys have any comments, uh, feedback regarding traffic safety in Aguado Dulce or Antelope Valley area. Um, if you could please uh submit those uh forms or comments by August thirty-first. And then as far as the traffic studies, um, no new updates. We're still working on preparing the request for funding for the multi-lane stops on at Aguado Dulce Canyon Road and Davenport Road. Um, it's just the beginning of the fiscal year, so we're working on the funding for that. And then, um, the traffic study for speeding concerns on Escan Dido Canyon Road between Aguado Dulce and Tyndale Road. Um, we're still about maybe two weeks to get that study completed, so we'll have it done by the end of the month. Um, let's see, what else? Just another announcement, uh, this Saturday, July tw- twelve. Uh, we have our free mattress recycling collection event at our road yard in Palmdale. That's at three eight, one two six North of CR Highway. That's from nine AM to two PM. Uh, that's all I have right now unless somebody has questions for me.
Right. Anybody have any questions for Josie? If not, thank you for the report. Thank you for attending tonight. We appreciate it. And if something comes up, we'll let you know. Okay, next up, we have um, LA County Parks Report about Vasquez Rocks from Parks Superintendent Sarah Brewer. Sarah?
Um, I just got uh, a text from Sarah. Um, apologies for the late notice, but I had someone call out and we have a photo permit and a twilight hike until later, so I won't. I don't think I'll be able to jump into the meeting. Mainly just wanted to share with people our event this weekend, which is on July thirteenth from five thirty to eight. It's a celebration of Western songs. Free music show and fundraiser. Bring your own dancing boots, picnic camp chairs and Western wear. Enjoy our food trucks for vendors. No smoking or drinking. So.
Alright, great. Thank you for sharing that with us, Mary.
Sure.
Other than that, I think that's all the reports regarding the local Aguado Dulce stuff. But now we're gonna move on to the Fifth District Report from Stephanie English. Stephanie's not here. We're gonna turn to Isabel. I see Isabel there. Hi, Isabel.
Hi. Um, I don't have too much to report, um, but I will say it's unfortunate Sarah couldn't, couldn't make it. But those things happen. You guys know how understaffed Parks is, so those things happen. Um, I know, Mary, you were gonna talk about this, but I'll just quickly say that uh, our office met with Parks Department as well as marrying a couple local equestrians in light of all these recent you know, things that have come up as far as parks and all the different issues. And we had a super productive meeting. And it, I think it's safe to say now that everyone is on the same page. And we look forward to working collaboratively with the community, with Parks, with the team at Vasquez, with Sarah and with the town council. And I think we've already, Mary can, I'm sure she'll touch on this, but we've already seen some changes and some of the requests that have already been made. So, uh, I think you guys will start to see a big turnaround real soon. And we have open communication now set up between the council with Mary. So I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see some great improvements with that. But that's it for me. Unless there's any questions or any comments or anything about that meeting, I'm happy to answer.
I just, I wanna um, thank you and um, Stephanie for hosting that meeting. Because it, it was a nice um, neutral setting and everybody was open to communication. Um, and I left really very hopeful that the um, moving forward, we'll be able to make compromises and find common ground. So I think we're on a, on a good path. So I appreciate you guys, um, both you and Stephanie facilitating that meeting.
Thanks, Mary. And we, we appreciate you constantly being a great advocate for the community and taking this on and helping out and being a great voice.
Right. Well, we appreciate your involvement in this, Isabel. So hopefully we get things ironed out. And that's, that's all what we're really looking for. We wanna get back to where we can enjoy our time spent at Vasquez Rocks.
Yes, and that's, that is the, the common goal.
I agree.
We want everyone to come and enjoy.
Yeah, so we're all.
Yeah, and eh, eh, go ahead. Now, um, the other thing I wanted to just briefly mention because it came up last at our last meeting about the proposed um, concert venue on CR Highway down across from the old, the motel. Um, Isabel did a little research on it and it looks like it's just pre-application. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, uh, we looked into it with our planning department. And I guess as of now, all they have done is, what they're kind of doing is almost vetting it with the department, vetting their plans before actually submitting any application. So they, they're calling it a pre-application, but there's no approval in that process. So at this point, it's not even up for a decision right now. So they're kinda, uh, they've just submitted something to get feedback from the department on their plans. Which, uh, we haven't gotten feedback from the department yet. But from what, what I know and from what Mary has told me and what we've seen on the pre-application, it doesn't seem like something that is going to be approved, but we're gonna stay in contact with the department and we'll continue to update you guys. And I know you guys will continue to update me on what you guys are hearing and seeing.
Right.
Yeah, this was, eh, it's a s- strange um, sort of concert venue. Uh, i- in Aguado Dulce, because eh, when I delved into it further, it looked like they were anticipating up to twenty-four thousand participants.
Huh? Wow, I think it looks like the anticipated ten thousand. Yeah, you never know. Who's gonna show up?
You never know.
Hmm, like, that's.
We communicated with the department, just so you guys know, I, I, I didn't mention this to you earlier, Mary, but I, it just came to mind now. But we did communicate with the department that this, this isn't something that would be supported by you guys or the community. And that people would be very, very upset by something like this. So they're, they're very well aware.
Well, and, and CR Highway is not like the four oh five freeway. You know, it's not like, uh, your stadium where you pull off and you've got three miles to get a stadium away. So anyway, look forward to working with you on it. Hopefully, hopefully, it's not something that continues on because it's, it's one of those things you, eh, 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 they, they believe there's so many people that are gonna show up on the day of the event. What are you gonna do? It's already, it's already there. So hopefully that gets um taken care of and look forward to working with you on it. Okay, great. Okay, well now we're gonna move to the California State Offices. First report we have, um, if we have someone here representing Assembly Member Tom Rocky. He represents the California Thirty-Fourth Assembly District. I believe Anna Zarley is the go-to person there. And I don't see her name here on the list, so we're gonna, if she shows up, let me know and we'll come back to that. Otherwise, we're gonna move on to uh, Senate District, California twenty-three, Senator Suzette Martinez Aladiz. And Tanya has been here in the past.
Uh, I am here in place of Tanya for tonight, uh, Thomas Marino.
Good, okay.
Uh, so we had seven of our bills uh, for this session year uh, get through the House of Origin deadline, which means they're now in the assembly. Uh, I'm gonna talk about just uh, two, which is a gr- it's a great margin for uh, this year and uh, being in the minority, the super minority. And all of our bills, all seven of them passed with zero opposition, which is absolutely fantastic to see uh, happening. The two biggest ones I wanna talk about tonight are SB two ninety-six. Which uh, is our bill that aims to uh, entirely exempt uh, the primary residents of a hundred percent disabled veterans from property taxes. Uh, so we're hoping that the, that will get through the assembly. We don't see any kind of opposition to it at all in any of the committees, so uh, we're gonna hope that gets through. Uh, that'll be great for our uh, veteran community. And then the other one I wanna talk about is SB five seventy-one, which is looting and impersonating first responders during an emergency. Uh, what this bill does is it increases the penalties for looting or impersonating first responders during any kind of state of emergency. Uh, I think it triples the current fine, if I remember right, as well as increases uh, jail time. Uh, so that passed through the Senate with zero opposition as well. Uh, and then a bill that the senator uh, is, is close to her heart is SB seven twelve. Uh, this bill was authored by Senator Grove. Uh, it is uh, our Jay Leno bill. Uh, the intent of this bill uh, is to reestablish a thirty-five-year rolling exemption from smog checks uh, requirements for classic cars and collector vehicles. Uh, that passed out of the Senate at a thirty-two to three margin. So it's gonna be in the assembly. I think it's being referred sometime this week to one of the uh, committees. So those are the three biggest bills that I wanted to talk about really quick. Uh, another quick update to do with the budget. Uh, with the budget, it's gonna be a thirty, uh, three hundred and twenty-one billion dollar uh, budget this year for the state of California, which is about double what it was just ten years ago. It increases uh, a lot of our borrowing by two point five billion dollars. Uh, two hundred and twenty-eight point four billion uh, comes from the general fund. Uh, thirteen point six billion comes from different reserve accounts, seven point one billion comes from the rainy day fund. And six point five billion comes from other reserves like uh, the climate reserves, uh, and a couple other uh, reserves like that. Uh, so those are the uh, biggest. We had a bunch of trailer bills go through committees uh, last week for the budget. Uh, there were about three or four of the trailer bills, which had, which were about three hundred to four hundred pages long. Uh, we voted no on just about every single one of those, uh, because a lot of it is just pork that the state can't afford. Uh, if you guys remember, just a couple years ago, we were at a hundred billion dollar surplus uh, in our budget. And now we're, uh, the original estimation was, we're about seventy-four or fifty-four billion at the beginning of the year. We've just been able to draw from different funds, uh. But tho- that is the quickest update that I have right now. You guys are free to, I'll go ahead and link my email into the chat and you guys are free to reach out to me uh, in our office at any time. Uh, I, I handle all of our policy in the district, so if you guys ever need to know anything or uh, wanna send me any kind of letters for support or opposition for stuff. Uh, you guys go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Any questions?
I think we're looking good. Thank you, Thomas. We appreciate the report. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Of course, always, I, I always have to be around.
Alright, great. Next up, we have the US, um, Congressional District, George Whitesides, I believe. Is here to update us on, um, Mr. Whiteside. Yes, Shannon?
Hi, everyone. Hope you all had a good Fourth of July weekend. Uh, as temperatures are reaching triple digits, I know it's been really hot recently. The Congressman's helping to lead a series of bills aimed at addressing the growing heat. Um, together, the legislative package is gonna bring critical infrastructure improvements at at-risk communities and assist the federal government in responding to heat waves, coordinate some strategies to create long-term solutions. Um, it's really just to keep families safe and reduce heat risks as best we can. So the three bills, I'll start with the first one, HR thirty-seven oh three is the Excess Urban Heat Mitigation Act. This bill supports projects that improve infrastructure, green spaces and innovative technologies to cool at-risk cities. HR thirty-seven oh four, the Coordinated Federal Response to Extreme Heat Act. Uh, this bill creates a unified federal strategy to prepare for and respond to extreme heat events. Improve collaboration among agencies and ensure communities perceive timely support. It also creates uh, additional pathways for data collection and public warnings and heat health research. And the last one is the Extreme Heat Economic Study Act. And this bill tasks the National Integrated Health Information System, which is the NIH H I S, with studying how extreme heat affects the economy to give lawmakers the data they need to create stronger plans to protect people's health and support local me- local communities. Um, so hopefully we'll see some movement with that. I hope we have a, a bit of an update next time that we meet. Um, you guys are, are off on in August, is that right?
We're off.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have an update in, wow, it's already gonna be September. That's kind of crazy to think about. Um, but a quick programming update, the Congressional App Challenge is still rolling along. We'll be accepting applications from middle and high school students until late October. So if you know of any students that are interested, feel free to point them my way. I'll also drop my email in the chat or send them to congressionalappchallenge.us. Um, second thing is the Service Academy application will be open soon for the fall. So as soon as it's officially live, we'll be sure to let you all know. And sending any materials you have to make sure that students that are interested in applying to any of the academies have the resources and info they need to submit a competitive app. So that is the extent of my update, but let me know if you have any questions or concerns. We're always here for you guys, so let us know.
Alright, thank you very much, Shannon. Let's see if there's any questions out there. It looks like we're clear. Uh, if anything comes up, I'm sure we can get ahold of you or get your phone number here on our agenda. And so we'll uh, have a good Augustins. Oh, no, July and August. Don't wanna get too much ahead of ourselves here, but we look forward to speaking with you uh, in September. Alright, thank you. Uh, next up, we have the Santa Clara River Watershed Area Steering Committee, Major W. Watershed Coordinator's Amanda Begley. Amanda, are you good? She, I thought she was here. Uh, I don't see her. So, um, how about Heather Tropin? Heather isn't here either. Okay.
Um, I can give just a, a brief update, um, on what's been happening at the Watershed Steering Committee. Um, we had, uh, uh, where am I at? Um, every year. Every year, we determine who the watershed coordinator is going to be. And um Tree People has been our watershed coordinator with Amanda and Heather. Um and this year, we had another um applicant who wanted to join in. Um but the committee decided to stay with Tree People because they understand the rural aspect. Of um our watershed out here in the Santa Clara River, and it's. Our our watershed is just really unique in comparison to all the other watersheds in um LA County. So it was eh kind of a no-brainer on keeping Tree People as our watershed coordinator, so. We look forward to working with Amanda for the next, I think, probably four years.
Well, and to refresh memory of those, um she was the one, and I don't know if she instituted it, but saw through. Uh the hall water reimbursement, which was fantastic to give people relief that have water hauled in. The deadline has passed, uh it was June twenty-seventh, but she was able to extend the deadline, so. Uh you know, it's something where I think most of the people have either gotten their reimbursement checks. Or are going to get their reimbursement checks, so we look forward to working with her in the future.
And I think um there might be some additional money left over, she talked at the last meeting a little bit about it in the fall. Um I think they are gonna be offering free well assessments. Um and also possible free additional water storage tanks, so. Um that's gonna be coming down um probably in the fall.
Great, fantastic, so we look forward to hearing her report in September. Well, let's see here, so we're gonna. We're gonna move right on to waste management, we have a report from. Quincy, I believe, Quincy.
Yeah, hi, hey, everybody. How is, how is everyone doing?
Good, good.
Good, awesome, I'm doing great, so I don't really have too much of an update, I know that the AVEC Center last weekend was closed. Due to the holiday, um so just reporting on that, and so it is set to open, I believe, on the nineteenth. Um I will leave my information in the chat in case anybody is planning to go and take things to the AVEC Center. You can reach out to me and just say, hey, I just wanna make sure it's gonna be open, um and then I can double-check for you. So just wanted to let everybody know, um does anybody have any questions or concerns for me?
Uh it looks like you're clear.
Okay, I'll leave my information in the chat.
Fantastic, thanks for.
All right.
Quincy.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have um Old Business, which is PSPS. Uh Southern California Edison, uh collaboration with Acton Town Council City of Santa Clarita, Acton Aguadolce Unified School District. Uh do we have any report on that in regards to the old business? If not, we're gonna move right on to RT- RTG Investments. The Aguadolce Residential Project TT five oh three eight five, Chris is the one that's been updating us. On what's going on, and uh he's not here this evening. So if anybody else would like to give a report on what's going on at the RTG Investment Property. Doesn't look like it, okay, good enough, so that moves us over to uh our. Our reports, which we're gonna start off with the President's Report. Uh our this year, twenty twenty-five, the Town Council meeting format, uh in an effort to. Be most inclusive with the community participation and effective communication, the council will continue with the virtual meetings. And have in-person hybrid meetings twice a year. Virtual meetings will be January, February, March, May, June, July, October, and November. The in-person hybrid meetings will be April and September, which is our next meeting in September. Location of the in-person hybrid meeting will be the Aguadolce Women's Club, which is three three two oh one Aguadolce Canyon Road. And um our December meeting will be an in-person meeting only that will not be hybrid. So August is dark for summer break, and we look forward to seeing everybody September uh in person. So that's uh what's coming up in the future, uh incoming correspondence for action. Um response from Kim Lozelle regarding concerns at Vasquez Rocks, we received those uh June tenth. And I believe our meeting. With them was the eleventh, when was it?
Um we met uh on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
And based on the cooperation at that June twenty-sixth meeting, while there's still some outstanding issues. Um I'm hopeful that with additional community engagement, most of those matters are gonna be resolved, so I don't see any need. For a response at this time.
Okay, great, fantastic, uh public hearing, uh community meetings and workshops. Uh we also have Regional Planning Hearing Officer, Public Hearing for conditional use permit to authorize construction operation. And maintenance of a new wireless communication facility consisting of a fifty-five foot tall. Full water tank and a pertinent facility for AT&T. Project location is three three four three three Aguadolce Canyon Road. I believe that's, is that Sandy Lang's property down there on the corner where we had the con- we had the fair, it was the fairgrounds uh five, four or five years ago.
Yes, it was actually where we had it last year also.
Okay, well, you tell who I've been, um so uh that project location is there. And it's been delayed till June fourteenth.
And it was, it was delayed a week, but I did check and it was approved, so.
All right.
Um for those of you with AT&T service, hang in there, they'll eventually get that tower up.
Yeah, takes them a while, but they finally get it up, uh Housing Ordinance Update. Uh recent changes in state housing law requires that Los Angeles County update its local regulations. And if you want details on how they're gonna update that, you can go to our agenda, and the the link is there that you can click on, that'll take you right to. Um LA County's link, um regional plans, regional planning plans that were filed. Uh we've got ninety-one forty solid canyon road, a thirty by fifty-foot metal agricultural building. Uh also, we had some strategic compliances grading for our new single-family residence. Uh which is at uh right now, there's no address, it's actual parcel number. Um if anybody's interested, you can go on our on our website. And find our agenda and click on any of these links to find out more information on it. Um the uh it was three three four three two Steel Street. Pre-application counseling for proposed new guest room, twenty-nine new guest rooms. Lodge, storage barn, wine tasting room, spa room, community pavilion, picnic pavilion, trailhead pavilion, bird watching blind. Exterior, is there like somebody's radio playing in the background there? All right, so anyway, uh this information you can find on. All right, and Carousel Ranch is having their Heart of the West fundraising event Saturday, August twenty-third. And they also have a silent live auction at that particular event. Um there are some other uh single-family residences and a new fre- freestanding pool, cabana. Uh with a gable roof on Glen, on Deer Glen, so at this time, this brings.
Hey, Don, can we go back to E and just briefly talk about that, we. Um that's the one 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 thirteen Darling Road, proposed new temporary housing.
Yeah, what is that?
I don't know, but.
Let's talk about that, okay, that had to do with, what is temporary housing, it's like the Department of Regional Planning. Came up with a new.
Yeah, and I I I don't understand any of this. How it would be approved, but um. Proposed new temporary housing, four units total, uh okay, so it's gonna be four units total on one property. Um even though we have um. CSD, which says it can't do that, but I think temporary puts it in a whole different story. Units are park model RVs, four hundred square feet. Equipped with self-contained above-grade wastewater storage tank and a potable water storage tank. Contract with a county licensed sewage pumping company will be provided. Um uh we just need to keep an eye on that, I I'll actually, I think what I'm gonna do, I think Isabel has signed off. Um but I think I'm gonna send this to her. Um and say, no.
Yeah, well, and I don't know, you know, when it um when it says temporary. You know, half Aguadolce is temporarily forever, you know, it's like the the old structures, all that temporary, you know, and they're there for thirty years. So to me, it seems like at best, it needs to be defined for a certain length of time situation. And then what's gonna happen after that time expires, um you know, because obviously, we've got concerns. Um yes, there's uh they are licensed sewage pumping company, but what if they all of a sudden aren't around anymore? Uh what, and I've seen, you know, usually where you see a portable sewage is is when when it's a uh like a construction office. With a toilet they flush twice a week type of deal, but a home, um you know, you're talking forty or fifty gallons. Per person per day, uh so I can imagine that that sewage is gonna fill up quite right, well, it's gonna. Fill up as fast as the water storage tank goes down, so it is a concern. Um and it looks like they're thinking about temporary housing. A lot of other people I know spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to find water so that they can build a home. And the county oftentimes denies their request, so anyway, yeah, if if you can fire a letter up and get more detail on that, cause I. Personally, I've never heard of new temporary housing. Um it just seems to me like it's something that might might be a concern immediately.
Excuse me, can I say something?
Yeah.
Um do you think they they wanna put an Airbnb there?
I don't.
And have for rentals?
Uh we we don't know, you know, I mean, it says proposed new temporary housing, four units total. There's no definition.
But that would be, uh that that sounds like it would be Airbnb because that's temporary.
Well, no, they're they're talking about for residents displaced by the heat and fire.
Oh, okay.
And the the units are the park model RVs, well, I went on the park model RV website. And they're all three hundred and ninety-nine square feet, they're all, there there's some regulation about four hundred foot, once they get over four hundred square foot. You know, then it throws them in another category is all I can figure, um but I think we need to hear back from the Department of Regional Planning. Uh cause I personally have never heard of this temporary housing and.
No, it's weird.
Uh temporary housing is not defined by a particular time element, and I think that needs to be attached. Um you know, li- like they ta- you know, they 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 basically uh will not allow you to put on. Uh temporary um RV or home until you have an actual building from there, so.
Right.
We'll find out more details, so that brings us to item number nineteen, which is open forum. Uh open forum is a time when we allow anybody who wishes to attend our meeting and wishes to a- address those who are here. Uh we limit it to three minutes, and they're allowed to um share whatever ideas they might have. And uh basically inform who's here uh as to what uh what their intentions are. So at this time, we're gonna open it up for open forum, and if you can raise your hand. Um I get the pleasure of selecting who gets to speak, and then you can do your presentation, and we'll move on with the meeting. So who would like to go first? All right, oh, I see Fatima, fa- no, I need, I need to know.
Fatima, Fatima.
Fatima, Fatima, I see her lined up, uh please, it's this is the open forum section of our meeting. Feel free, whatever, whatever you have.
Okay, so I'm Fatima Surtawi, and I am from Keller Island, Beverly Hills, Robert E. Helg, we have a new commercial property. For sale in Aguadolce, it's three three zero one Aguadolce Canyon Country Road. Uh it is the giant uh supermarket Sweetwater Farm, the Maria Bonita Mexican Restaurant, and. Three other vacant properties in that area. Uh I have a big presentation, but I guess tonight I I will just be doing. Uh talking a a bit more about it, uh it's the only market in town, as I'm sure you guys all know, and um. The two current, there's two leases currently, like of the two properties I explained, and it's for sale. So if you guys know of anybody in the area or not in the area who might be interested in purchasing the property, please. Contact me, uh we would love to help them get the property and and help make their new businesses. Come to life in this great area, um I'm sure you guys probably already know the area because it's, I mean, it's. Very, it's very, uh it's right by the women's club, I mean, you guys all know the area, so. I don't know how much you want me to talk about it, because I mean, you guys are the area, but anyways, the the more logistic part of it, the total space available. Three thousand eight hundred square feet, uh it's freestanding property, uh the gross leasable area is seventeen thousand. Five hundred and fifty square feet, and it was built in nineteen eighty-eight. And the parking ratio is two point two eight by a thousand square feet. So if you guys know anybody, please feel free to reach out to me, ra- you can raise your hand on this meeting right now. I'm gonna put my information in the group chat, and if you have any other questions regarding real estate, commercial residential. Please feel free to reach out, I am, I do live here in the Antelope Valley, so I am, I'm close by this area. So I would love to get to know more of you guys and help you guys any way I can.
Great, we appreciate the report, uh look forward to working you on that, you say you are gonna put your information in the chatroom.
Yeah, I'm putting it right now.
Like to contact her, feel free to reach out, and and that sounds good.
Awesome, thank you, nice meeting you guys.
Thank you, all right, anybody else for open forum, would like to comment or share anything? Uh I don't see any hands up, all right, so we're gonna move right on to the report regarding high-speed rail. High-speed rail, anybody here to report on high-speed rail? Doesn't look like it, so we're gonna move on to the uh committee reports. And the first report is gonna come from the Election Committee Chair, Lorna Leslie, Lorna.
Hello, good evening, Don, good evening, Aguadolce Town Council, thanks for having me.
Yes.
Such excitement going on in our community right now.
Me neither.
Um I am here just to put forth the uh election timeline. Because this is our last meeting before the nominating period opens, so it needs to be officially announced. At this meeting, the actual applications are not out yet, so they only come out during the nominating period. But again, needs to be announced at this meeting, so that's what I'm doing, I'm going to put the uh. The uh timeline in your chat here. But basically, August sixth is when the nominating period is gonna open for four slots. Aguadolce Town Council, that's also the date that any incumbents that intend to rerun needs to declare whether they're gonna run or not. You can certainly tell me previous to that, but that's the cutoff, if you don't tell me by then, I'm gonna assume that they're not running. They probably will email you first, though, just so you know, but that is the official opening of the nominating period. I'll be distributing applications uh with, we'll have them. I'll be distributing applications, uh, with, we'll have them on our website. I'll also have at least two pu- public locations in town, which I'll notify you. I have to confirm it with the businesses to make sure they're, you know, okay with that. But we'll have at least there, and then obviously, you can get them from me directly. And I'll certainly make sure each of the town council members have them, so they can offer them to anybody they want. Um, I suggest that everybody think about their neighbors, and who might be a good person to help serve our community. I think the most effective way to get people engaged is to let them know that you think they would be good at it, in a sincere way, obviously. Um, so, everybody think about that, think about who, who you might know that might be willing, and. You certainly can, if you're already a town council member, you can let them know how you feel about the time commitment involved and all that in a realistic way. But I think community members want to be involved, I think they just need to know the opportunities out there, and that they would. Be, uh, possible candidates, I think a lot of people don't think they can do it, and they can't, you know this, so. Reach out to your neighbors, your friends, they need to be a registered voter in living in Aguadolce for the last year to be a candidate. So, they could, they can't live in Acton, they can't live in County Country, they need to, to be registered to vote being in Aguadolce. Um, and I'll certainly be happy to discuss any, if they need, want me to check on their voter registration, anything like that, I can do all of those things. So, the closing time for the nominating period is September twentieth, it coincides with our Aguadolce Country Fair and Parade, which I hope everyone will be attending. And I, it's exciting that you're gonna have a flirt or a parade interview, it'd be great. But that is the cutoff, that, it'll be that day at five P M. So, hopefully, no one will wait that long, people will do it before, but I will make myself available that day. I'll be, I'm on the fair committee, so I will be around helping, um, and can accept the mean person also. So, um, if by October, uh, October fifth is the date that we have to declare if we are going to have an election or not. So, that's in the timeline there. Right now, we'll just work towards getting the documents, the applications out, absentee ballot forms out, there's the cutoff for that is in there, October twenty-first. Um, that's obviously if we have an election, if we don't have, if we have four people or less that are qualified candidates, they will be, um. They will be declared elected by affirmation, as we've done before. Um, but if we have more, I'm happy to run an election, so again, ask your friends, ask people in the community. Feel free to give them my information, I'll be happy to talk to them about it and give them the application. Does anybody have any questions?
I think we're looking good, that's a pretty thorough report. Thank you for attending tonight, Lorna, and thank you for taking on the responsibility of being the chair of the Election Committee, we really appreciate it.
I appreciate your appreciation, and if anybody, uh, you know, is interested in helping with the Election Committee, we are always accepting new committee members. And again, if anybody has any questions, otherwise, I will make sure that, um, that through Mary, and then just for directly to the town council members, I will email everybody an application, so they have it. But if you do intend to rerun, or you know you intend, you do not, an email whenever is convenient for you would be appreciated. Um, but otherwise, if I don't hear from you, I will reach out to you, I will hunt you down and make you answer me. So, better just send the email ahead of time, right?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have the report from the Film Committee, um, headed by Catherine Cigar, Catherine?
I just unmuted, um, there were seven film productions, um, in June.
All right, and next up, we have, uh, Parks and Trails, a report from Mary Johnson.
Okay, um, Isabel touched on it briefly, but, um, I just wanted to say thanks to Stephanie English and Isabel. Of Supervisor Barker's Office, Park Management Kevin Reagan and Kim Bosell, and Vasquez Rocks Park Superintendent Sarah Brewer. Along with Equestrians Karen Dagnan and Lori Henry. The meeting had really good open communication, and many, many issues were discussed. While some issues will need additional engagement, I am hopeful that mutual compromises will result in finding common ground, so. Um, and I think there are some changes that are actually happening already, so, um. It was a great productive meeting.
Good.
Yeah.
And it looks like Cindy Grimes has her hand up in the air here, Cindy?
Yes, thank you, um, Mary, I have a quick question, so Cliff shared with me that there is a new map out of the Darryl Redman Trail, is that correct?
Um, it, it's not a new map, it's, um, it's, it's a map that's been out for a while, when, when he, he put that, when it was proposed.
Okay, I would really like to be involved in this conversation around that trail, I'm all for it, I just wanna share with you that I. I, I love the idea of especially how long it is, but our property is number twenty-four on the to be acquired. So, I'd like to be able to, you know, at least be involved in conversation, and of course, as, e- even if it's not like our property that is to be acquired, but, you know. Some part of our rip or whatever, um, the trail will go right along that telephone road, and as you know, we've been very involved in that area. So I would like to be able to at least stay on top of it and have some sort of communication and be involved in conversations that go on about that.
Sure, sure, and just to give you a little history on that. Um, currently, the Darryl Redman Trail follows the Pacific Crest Trail, which goes along Aguadolce Canyon Road. And then along Sierra Highway, and then over into the Acton Park off of Escondido. Um, what, the proposed, um, trail that you're looking at is truly proposed. And the reason it's proposed is that is what the Pacific Crest Trail is looking for, for realignment down the road. They've been looking at this for probably ten, fifteen years that I'm aware of. Um, it's not gonna happen anytime soon, because in order to do that, they've gotta acquire a lot of property. So, I don't think it's gonna happen in my lifetime, I'll be honest, because, um, it, it, the, the reason that, that this was even looked at was. The Pacific Crest Trail would like to have the trail off of the main road. But I think the hikers are happy having it on the main road, because it goes through town. So, um, it's, it's kind of a, uh, a give and take, but don't be concerned that. This Darryl Redman Trail is going to happen with the proposed, um, location anytime soon.
Yeah, I didn't think it would be, I just wanted to make sure since if the rocks are involved in it, and the county's involved in it, and the Pacific Crest Trail's involved in it. You know, there could be a lot of moving pieces, and I, I do believe it will take a while, but in some areas, it may not take as much if you have that many, um, I guess I wanna say. Commitments into making this happen. So we just wanna stay on top of it, um, you know that we love the, the area, and, you know, all the things that we've tried to kinda communicate through Deputy, um, Martinez. About, you know, off-highway vehicles and things like that, all coming through this direction. So, if we can just kinda be, stay on top of it, I'm always happy with that, so that we can understand what's going on.
Yeah, I was ju- was just trying to figure out when, because I think it was back in two thousand thirteen, I think is when the, the trail went. Two thousand six was when the memorial went in, but, um, I know the Pacific Crest Trail has been looking at realigning since two thousand five. And we're twenty years later, and there, there's been no movement for that, so. Um, but definitely, any, any, um, s- talks of it, or, or any, any future plans will definitely include you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Sounds good, so that brings us to the Water Stewardship, a report, which is, um. Brought to you tonight by, uh, Boston Henry Company, or Don Henry, and as far as the, uh, the water situation. Uh, it's getting hot out there, and I think everybody has witnessed the water hauling trucks and vehicles. And so, we looked good for about two to three years, and now we're kinda back to where we were four years ago. So, um, wells, they're still kinda holding their own as far as for domestic use, but it's the outside watering that seems to be the big consumer. And I think, uh, being that we're in July right now, we got a couple months to go before we start to get into the rain months. And, and it's, it's, it, it's a situation where I think everybody's in conservation mode. And with the recent cost of haul water, uh, it used to be, I found an old receipt, eight dollars and fifty cents is what, uh, Geiger Brothers used to charge, and now it's. Three hundred to four hundred dollars for the same amount of water, so, it's getting expensive, um, but at least it's available. And it's still less expensive than Malibu and Topanga area, where it's like six hundred to eight hundred dollars a load over there. So, uh, that being said, uh, we're gonna move on to the Ways and Means, uh, report, which is Scott Keller, but Scott's not here tonight. We do have disaster planning, I noticed that Gary is here, Gary, would you like to share? I know the disaster planning has had a few events, one event was over held at, um, Acton Park. And they actually, I was sent a video of a balloon that was let loose, um, and. It's kind of amazing how, uh, they're actually able to track the balloon's progress. And it, it actually got up to like forty thousand feet, I was informed. And it lasted for like two and a half days, which is wonderful, um, but unfortunately, it was across the continental United States. But apparently, according to Gary, uh, there was one a while back, that actually went around the globe twice. And transmitted information the entire time, and they've got the electronics down to where. The, uh, the transmitting device and the recording device actually only wer- weighs a few grams, which if you can believe that. So, that being the case, uh, it's pretty involved, and the disaster planning group is not just involved with disaster planning, they also do events like that. Like the, the Pico balloon release and launch also. So, Gary and Chris are both involved heavily into those projects, and if anybody's interested, um. Definitely that wants to contact. Uh, this brings us to the announcement portion of tonight's meeting, and first is the Household Hazardous Waste, which has already been brought up once, but it's the first and third Saturday of each month. Uh, from nine to three, of course, last Saturday it was closed because of the holiday. Um, but there are also a free mattress collection, June twelfth, uh, that's passed, but it's coming up again. Uh, it'll also be, um, in Palmda. Uh, the Association of Rural Town Councils is having a meeting held July thirtieth this month. And it will be via Zoom, so our next Aguadolce Town Council meeting is set for September tenth, twenty twenty-five. August meeting is being canceled, as it is in past years. And the meeting in September will also be a high-grade meeting, which will be in-person, and also via Zoom. So we look forward to seeing every, everybody there in person at Aguadolce Women's Club, which is right down the street at three-three-two-zero-one Aguadolce Canyon Road. Uh, the meeting will start at six-thirty, which is the administrated portion of the meeting, everybody's welcome to come to that portion. And then we have the Community Involvement Meeting, which starts at seven o'clock. So, as far as any future agenda items, uh, I think we're clear on that.
Dawn, the only thing I got was, um, the agenda request from, um, the gal, the Realtor who spoke during open forum. And I'm, I'm just not sure that that warrants being put on the agenda, but I'm willing to discuss it.
Yeah, well, I mean, i- i- what kind of a present, how, how long is she, her question like five minutes, or how long is, is she looking for?
Well, I, 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 I just, it.
It gets.
I don't wanna open this up so that every Realtor in town.
Exactly.
Comes, comes and wants to do a presentation on something that's for sale.
Yeah.
Because we haven't done that in the past, but she's asking for, uh, five to ten minute. Um, I'm, I'm just concerned that it, it's not really a community issue. You know, it's, it's commercial property for sale.
Yeah.
And, and.
It's, it's a business, it would be a business presentation, and we've never had business presentations in the past. So, uh, you know, as far as, um, voting on it, uh. I think we ought to ask the council, um, do you want to open up our. Community meetings to business presentations, does anybody have any comment on that?
A- and business presentations are fine if they are, um, you know, doing a conditional use permit, or, um. Doing something that they are looking for council approval on, or council, they, they need to, um.
Wh- where the, where the county has directed them to, to approach.
Correct.
Council.
Yeah.
To, to get the approval of the community in order to, for them to continue with their project that's gonna serve the community.
Right, like for, with the AT&T, um, tower.
Exactly, you know.
Right.
As far as, um, any kind of, um. Presentation toward selling something, we never, we never had that, and I don't think it's time to start, but I'm open to what. Yeah.
I agree with you guys, it doesn't make sense, she didn't even say how much they were asking for it.
Uh, yeah, but that, that's, and, and we don't really wanna get involved in that, I think it's great.
True, true, yeah.
It's great to come to the open forum, and to let it, let people know that, yeah, it's gonna be for sale. But to actually agendize that request, what happens then is. Uh, 'cause there's probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred properties for sale in Aguadolce and Acton, and so we open ourselves. And, and at this point, that isn't the intent of the town council, the town council is basically to inform the community. Of what involves the community, and, and that's kinda what we have, yeah, Cliff, you wanna add to this?
Yeah, I, I just think the way it was handled tonight was good, uh, gave a chance for the community to be aware that there's.
Exactly.
Um, if there's some other benefit to the community, like, um, Mary was saying, I think that would be beneficial then. If it's helping to serve, you know, provide a, a different service. Um, but I think the way, I think the way it was handled tonight was good, um, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Because you don't want Realtors coming up and telling you, every property that's for sale, uh, but that's what next door is for. Not the council.
Okay, but they are welcome to attend the meeting, and to let the community know in the open forum section of our meeting. That they're the ones that are involved with.
Oh, yeah, exactly, and that's what she did.
Okay, perfect, all right. So, I think that's kinda the attitude of the council.
Okay, so based on that, we will not agendize that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Wonderful. Um, all right, so at this point, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I motion to adjourn thi- this evening's meeting. I motion to adjourn this, this evening's meeting.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Alright, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is officially adjourned. See everybody in September.
Yeah, see you in September. Have a good summer.
Meeting you guys. Take care.
Thank you all for participating.